All right, so now being 5:45, I'll call the Monday, February 26th meeting of the Plumpton Board of Selectmen to order. First item on our agenda under Updates and Discussion is an appointment, and that is for the Police Department, Brendan Emberg as a full-time police officer. Any questions or concerns about that?
Nope.
Okay. All right, I'll make a motion that we appoint Brendan Emberg as a full-time police officer effective 2/26/24 until dissolved. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Do we have to do roll call because we're going into it a second later?
No, we just have to do roll call if we're remote, and all the votes in executive session have to be roll called.
Yeah, okay, okay.
All right, so let's get into, we've got Highway Superintendent Rob Farlot with us today, so Rob, can I turn things over to you for an update?
Sure, you want to start with the update?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Okay, um, do you want me to come up or?
Where do you want, Rob? Do you want Rob up front?
A little closer, just so we make sure we get it on the...
Yeah, yeah, no, no.
Closer than ever. Some of us have old ears, so you have to speak up, so we don't miss a word.
So we have the financing done for the F-550. The truck itself should be done in about a week. Um, I've been working on the EAP plan for the Winnetouxer Bridge, the emergency evacuation plan, waiting for some more contact information to come back in, and then I can send it out to Churchill Engineering, and he can finish that. We redid the plow contracts to include an indemnification clause. I don't know if anyone saw.
That makes me happy.
That's what we're here for, right?
Yes.
Pay-as-you throw is showing a roughly 40% decrease in solid waste. It's looking like 36% or so, so it's actually helping pretty good with our operating costs.
Do you know how many people who have opted out of?
Uh, not that many. It was like 20 on the first year. I'm curious to see what it's going to be this year, how many people either go or stay.
Yeah, okay, good.
April 1st is technically the start of the first year of it, I guess you could say.
Okay.
Good.
Did I hear right that with that program and because of recycling, 36% less?
Yes, solid waste, yeah, about that.
Solid waste?
Yeah, about that so far.
That's impressive.
That's very impressive.
Thank you. We filled out the RDP, the Recycling Dividends Program, report for the grant, so that makes us eligible for the grant. Recycling solid waste survey was filled out to qualify for, oh, sorry, for someone going for a grant. We received roughly $5,880 through this grant so far. Um, the first year was only like $980 because it was like the start, and we didn't have pay-as-you throw going. The second year was right around $5,000, so which this year should be right around $5,000 again, and that's for like repairs to our facilities and stuff like that. Uh, we have the budget report in, the articles in, and the town report, they've all been submitted.
Check, check, and check.
Try to. We've included in the articles a placeholder for a new, to replace my F-150. It's starting to get a little long in the tooth. Um, I'm meeting with the Rec Committee, the 28th, to talk about the possibility of the Ventrac or some attachments from them. And 2024, transfer stickers are being sold. It's kinda, you know, it's winter season, there's not as much going on for us, so that's a little bit of an update. Does anybody have any questions or anything? Questions, comments?
Nice update. Any questions for Rob?
No, no. Doing a good job.
Yeah, nicely done.
While he's here, should we do snow and ice?
Yes, so we've expended our snow and ice budget, and we need to vote a snow and ice emergency to allow you to deficit spend.
Correct.
Okay, all right, any questions or, I mean, we do this every year, so, okay. I'll make a motion that we declare a snow and ice emergency and allow the Highway Superintendent to deficit spend for, if needed.
Thank you. Hopefully when it's over.
All right, so a motion?
Or is that...
That was the motion.
Second.
Okay. All in favor? Aye, okay, all right, thank you, Rob. That would be great. Well, hello, welcome!
Yeah, that's fine.
All right, so, um, okay. That's for the snow and ice emergency, if you could just initial that, that would be awesome. Okay, so we did the appointment, we did, we got the update from the Highway Superintendent, we voted the snow and ice deficit, and we'll go back to the use of Holt Field and Dog Policy, and we got this as discussion and potential adoption of a policy. So who wants to take the lead on this one? Who was supposed to take the lead on this one?
Well, I think probably it was initiated with Elizabeth's letter, and maybe the place to start is hear from her and hear her concerns, and then, I think, gather some information and ponder.
Okay, all right, very good. All right, Elizabeth, I will turn things over to you.
Okay, do you want me to stand there or what?
Yeah, why don't you, just so that people at home can hear. And we are all in receipt of your letter, thank you very much.
You're welcome. So first of all, thank you, Len, Sam, Mark, and Christine, John, and Brigitte for serving the town so well, so I don't have to, I can sit in my nice room home when you guys are out here in the cold. And my apologies for the glasses, but I have a little injury that's not attractive, but painless and not a big issue, I poked myself.
I can't hear you, Elizabeth.
Oh, I'm, okay, sorry. Apologies for the glasses, I hurt my eye, and it's not a pleasant vision, so I'm going to keep it covered and spare all of you. I just wanted to address the fact that I had heard that this area may be closed off for dog walking, so I sent you a letter, which, of course, you're welcome to share with anybody that hasn't seen it. And the point I was trying to get to without being too long, I was giving you some history of my experience, but I just feel that some senior citizens kind of fall by the wayside in some of these decisions. We're not part of Highway or Rec, we don't have a big group, so we're not at, we don't get to be heard on decisions, and I'm addressing dog walking because it's a way of senior citizens like myself getting exercise, getting out there, and we need flat space for that. I know we could use conservation area, but it's a real tripping hazard if you're pulling a dog on a leash, it's just really difficult. And I feel that there's always a way to compromise. I get that the fields are an issue. Lock them, put some money in the budget, control the fields better. We don't all have to have access to them, but that to me is a way to compromise, and let me walk my dogs around the edges, so that we're all enjoying the rights we have as taxpayers and citizens of this town. I feel like Plumbton has the benefit of being a really inclusive place, but it doesn't feel inclusive when certain people and groups are totally barred, you can't go to the school, now perhaps you can't walk the dogs up here, and next I'm concerned about Harry Jason Park. We already have three fields at the school, two playgrounds, a basketball court in town, and a basketball court at the Denne. Now we're having two more fields here. I mean, do we have this many kids that need to be addressed? I'd like to see us get some benefits too of the land around here, or the money that goes into maintaining all this. I have heard talk of a dog park, and I have looked into it. It's fine, it's not a walking area, and the people that have researched it along with myself tell me that it's expensive, insurance, clearing the land. We're talking about a long-range plan that I probably won't be alive to see because it could be five and 10 years out, so I don't see that as a viable solution to my particular issue, which is getting to enjoy more space. So what I'm looking for is being included in some of these decisions, having this section of the town heard, and being completely inclusive. Questions, anything?
Let me take a shot at some of these, because this has come up before the Town Properties Committee.
Oh, okay.
Recreation has said, I think you're closer than you think. First of all, I take a little exception, you know, they have the Council on Aging, which is very active for seniors, and I think that needs to be brought into the discussion. Recreation doesn't want the dogs on the field, but they're not against outside the, and they're talking about fencing in the fields.
Right.
So it sounds like...
That's fine, great.
The reason, Harry Jason Park, the fields that are used for soccer at the Denne get torn up in by the, by June, they're just a mess. So the intent was to move soccer, practice if you will, down to Harry Jason Park so that the fields at the Denne could heal. The School Committee made a decision to stop the dogs because of...
Yes, I did understand that.
Yeah, nobody was, I shouldn't say nobody, but enough people weren't picking up, and the kids were tracking the, it into the school.
Sure, good.
Now, we've talked a little bit about a dog park, you know, that it's somewhere on the radar, and there's lots of pros and cons, so I don't, I'm not talking far or against it. We do have a piece of land, we have a couple of pieces of land, though.
Okay.
One is Harry Jason Park, across the street from the entrance to Harry Jason is three acres that is cleared. That's part of Harry Jason Park, okay, it's in the deed.
I thought that was Sawchuk.
No, three acres of it is ours.
Okay.
So that's a potential place that might make sense. It's got a little slope, but it's not dramatic.
I'll be there tomorrow?
Yeah, take a look at it, I'd be interested in the feedback.
Yeah.
The other thing we were talking about is moving the basketball court into the complex here, as we figure out the fire station, et cetera. Partly because of some vandalism, partly because if we put it here, it makes a little more sense, we think it'll get more use. That frees up, I think there's an acre and a half there, maybe it's closer to two, I'm not sure, but it's an acre and a half. And I know I looked at some parks, like Provincetown put it in the dog park, and there was an acre and a half. Kingston, which is where they have their, for lack of a better word, dump, has a place there, and I think that's about the same.
Okay.
So it doesn't seem like the size is the problem. It's figuring out one where it might make the most sense to put one if we go forward.
Okay.
However, it is going to cost money if we do it, and given all the...
Everything does.
Yep, everything's on the plate. The Recreation Committee, though, is talking about putting a walking path all the way around the ball fields here at the townhouse, okay? That's part of what they're doing now, and if you've been out beyond the ball field, you'll see that they've actually started taking things out.
Yes, I have seen that, yeah.
What that walking path is going to consist of, initially, we don't know because it's come down to money. I mean, ideally, the Council on Aging has said they like to see it tarred, so that wheelchairs could be, you know, go around it, and I think that's the ultimate solution, but whether that happens in our lifetime, I don't know, we'll see.
Okay.
So there's a lot of thinking going on, and I think one of the things that we really need is somebody to lead the effort.
Uh-huh, okay.
I know you've come forward and said to me, you know, you didn't want to be on any committee, I've had others, but I think part of that...
I have been on committees in the past, but I don't want to be on them now, yes.
Well, you said you'd be on the dog committee.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, but I haven't heard.
Right.
Also historical, and I haven't heard back from them either.
I can tell you about that effort.
Okay.
So the dog committee is, we've got to find somebody who's willing to step up and say, "I'll lead it," because it's going to be a lot of effort to figure it out, get everybody on board, et cetera.
All right, why don't we talk about that afterwards?
Fine.
Okay, great.
So, any questions?
I'll take up everybody's time, but I'd certainly be willing to volunteer for that. And just...
Yeah, so a bunch of things to say. I agree, the walking path that the Rec Commission is talking about as part of the field renovation, and I think that's a real high priority, not only for the dogs, but for human beings, and I think for all of us. And as I understand it, the funding is there, right? That's a CPC project at this point, they were before CPC for 60 grand, they've raised 10 grand, they have the rest of it, and I, in terms of, it's always possible with big projects like that to start adding aspects to it, and then having to leave things out. I think the walking path is, other than the lights itself, is really a high priority, I think solves a lot of the issues, so I'm really excited about that. In terms of dog parks, yeah, they can be expensive, but that's another one, that there are CPC dollars available, and I think as John said, alluded to, it's going to take people interested in this, and, you know, frequently, a project like that gets excluded just because, ah, we don't have the money, but I think actually we do have the money. I think you've been exploring some grant opportunities as well. We can make that happen, we are good, we, the town of Plumbton, at multi-funded source projects, and that's a beautiful one, that CPC can be working on it, hopefully this grant money, I think private fundraising, we could definitely raise money for that as well. It's part of what Kingston did with theirs, is they ended up with a lot of signage, so that is absolutely doable, and I don't think it's a function of lifetimes or 10 years. If there are two or three people that are really interested and want to take up the challenge, we could get that done in a couple of years. Just expanding this out a little bit, I mean, the, I've been sitting as a selectman coming on 10 years from now, and I live in fear of when dog issues come up, I've spent my whole life as kind of a doggy advocate. We do kind of get into some tensions on people that are uncomfortable about dogs off-leash, we do get into some tensions about dog poop, and that's just requires, I think, some flexibility of all concerns to make that happen, and it takes a little bit, particularly the poop issue of people not abusing a privilege, and I think people sometimes confuse a right, a dog running free or a dog pooping any where they want, with a privilege that needs to be respected and needs to be dealt with responsibly. So I think that's mostly what I have to say, rambling, I just think this all can be taken care of, it's going to take a little work and a little bit of time, but I think we can make it happen. I'm so excited about the walking path.
Yeah, that sounds great.
You know, we do so much of the town business standing in the parking lot, we could at least be doing leisurely walks around the park and letting the beauty of the town influence our decisions along the way, and I'm sure the dogs would just adore walking with their owners, too.
And just in terms of the dog situation, it's, I don't understand that it's as big as issue, an issue as I keep hearing. I am every single day in some park or another here, and I've picked up a couple of times after other dogs, but I don't see it. And my friends are the guys that cut the on-foot cemetery, and they tell me although they come across it, it's not terrible, and it's part of their job to pick it up, and they do it. Just let me finish. And I was going around picking up the other day after other dogs, and much to my surprise, I was picking up, I guess, coyote poop, because it was all full of feathers and broken bones, and so it's not just dogs, it's, you know, it's a farm community, we have lots of animals pooping here, and as a former New Yorker who stepped through and around human feces, I don't see it as a big deal. That's all I've got to say.
And one more thing I think I should say, is people should recognize that the different town properties are under the auspices of authority of different organizations. The Denne is the School Committee, it's the way it goes, I'm not sure I necessarily agree with the decision that was made over there, but they take care of that. Rec Commission is, the, Harry Jason is under their auspices. The parks are under the Conservation Commission. Really, this one up here, Hoyt Field, is the one that we, that we have authority on.
So does that mean this is the only place my voice is heard?
Um, no.
No.
It is, however, they, hopefully you're heard in the other places, but ultimately, decisions on those places are those...
That's fine, I just want compromises, that's fine, I just want to worry about compromising, that's all.
And maybe that's what we can do more than anything else, is encourage compromise, encourage kind of some radical moderation in this without being out of the express.
I think Rob was...
Go ahead, Rob. Anything I will say, there are signs stating there are no animals allowed in the cemetery.
Yeah, I've seen that.
That is respectful to see, so the Alex, Alexander Handyman, which I'm assuming is the one you've talked to, the area that they weed whack, there is no animals allowed.
Yeah, but there are...
So there wouldn't be...
There are even horses in there, take it from someone who stepped in that, too. There are horses that go through there, everything else are there.
Oh, I haven't seen that in a long time.
I am there every day, I know these things.
Okay.
All right, this is actually a topic that I would be willing to take the lead on, and...
Oh, you're so good at that.
I just want to make sure that we are going after this the way that would make, I guess, the most people happy, whether, because I don't think you want a dog park. You're looking for a flat place to walk your dog.
Oh, I, a dog park is great, I think it's just doesn't...
But that's not what you're looking for.
Fill all my needs, which is more of the exercise.
So we're talking about a couple different things here, because a dog park is a fenced-in area, grassy or whatever with the surface, some agility stuff in there maybe, but you're looking for a flat surface, an area to walk your dog. So I think that this is an area that is definitely of interest to me as well, and I would be happy to take the lead on this, put together a committee, and start to look at what we can do, looking at grant money, looking at CPC money, possibly reaching out to some maybe retired bog owners, and see if they would be willing to let us walk the dogs around their properties, so just kind of get the ball rolling.
That's a great idea.
But we'll, so I guess more to come. We could put something out.
I think first thing is to get a committee.
Yeah.
So I think you'll have no problem signing people up, I'm convinced about that.
No, I don't think so either, yeah.
I just wish there was a way to have a poop discussion with the population, because it really is, I mean, I love animals, and I think, when I have to pick up poop, my head starts spinning with entitlements and the nerve of people, and they don't, they're too good to, I get it, believe me, I get it. I wish there was a way for people to understand that. I wish we could have some sort of lighthearted discussion about this that would reach people. You've got to clean up, it doesn't take a lot, it's just, I just don't understand it.
Well, if we do some type of dog area, dog park, there will have to be some education...
Can we threaten with fines and cameras, even if there aren't any, I mean...
Whoops.
Let the committee start to address these issues.
But, I mean, that's something that, right, people need to be responsible pet owners.
Gosh, yeah.
I have something to say.
Well, I agree.
It was not too long ago, I, and I work here, and I had the unfortunate mishap of, with my very nice shoes.
Okay.
I'd like to see signage somewhere, even for now, be responsible, pick up after your dog around here. I witness it, I see it all the time, and it's just not...
Do we have poop bags over there, too?
No.
Maybe we need the dispensers with the poop bags?
They're expensive, from what I understand, but it's, and who's going to pick up and where are they dumping it?
I didn't hear about that.
We've gotten rid of two barrels that nobody got rid of, that they actually picked up the barrels themselves, and I said dispose of them, barrel and all.
Well, typically, when you go to an area that has, Metta Poyset, I take my dog there when we get on and off the boat, they've got a little kiosk, for a better word, lack of better word, where you've got the poop bags. There's a little receptacle there where the poop goes, so that's certainly something that we could look at. I mean, you wouldn't want it in, going in the barrel with the food from...
With empty.
...all of that, but it's just going to be education. I think we can certainly educate people.
I think it should be taken with you.
I do think the walking trail and the dog park don't have to be mutually exclusive.
Well, that's true.
You know, we could have a walking path outside the dog park.
Absolutely.
And that might make a lot of sense. We have the land, I'm convinced of that. The other thing is, as I was thinking about it, I think Kingston, through a foundation grant, got almost 90% of their dog park paid for, so there's money out there, that's...
Money's not going to be the issue on this.
I think anybody with the dogs and everybody who's a dog lover in this town, which is the majority of all of us, I mean, I've been a dog owner my whole life, and I just don't think, and like Elizabeth said, it's unfortunate, you get one that ruins it for others, and people who aren't responsible, and it's happening here at the town hall on this property.
But when I talk to people at the school, they say, "Oh, we know who does it, they're right on camera." Well, can we not do something about that?
Yeah, then address it, yeah.
And that's the school, what I'm talking about here, because that was the school who voted on that.
Yeah, I know, I know, but...
So now it's happening here, and I had a vendor here, and it was very embarrassing.
But if you have cameras...
It was, it was just embarrassing to have to ask somebody to please go and pick up what's outside, so they're not stepping in it.
I think the selectmen, though, have, I think you've taken the lead, even though these other groups have, you know, day-to-day management, everything kind of rolls back to us.
Right, it does.
You know, the recreation rolls back to us.
Signs remind people sometimes.
Well, we had signs at the, at the school, and it didn't work, so, but...
We'll have to figure something out.
Get a committee and start talking about it.
But there is, I had reached out to the state, and they do say that this PARC grants, which is P-A-R-C grants, can reimburse for the development of a dog park as long as they're being constructed on parkland, which would be if we use that...
Harry Jason, yeah.
Harry Jason area. She says that they hope that the PARC grant will be posted sometime in March with a July deadline, so we can check that out, maybe...
You got your work cut off?
Yeah, yeah, so we'll put something out, get the word out that we're looking to form a committee?
There are lots of easy trails all through Harry Jason Park, too, they're really nice, they're full of roots and hills and things, so, again, it doesn't have to be a mutually exclusive place at all.
I think you'll find there will be seniors walking around there that don't have dogs, if we can find, get it going, yeah.
Definitely, people run there, too.
Yeah, so we'll figure this out.
Thanks so much, thanks for giving me the time, and thanks again for your service.
No, thanks for coming in, thanks for coming in.
Thanks for bringing it up.
Don't you want to stay for the rest?
No. I told you how grateful I was that you do this.
Thanks for asking. Yeah, but thanks for asking.
I like the glasses, though, I wanted to ask for an autograph, you look Hollywood.
Is that horrible, or what?
No.
It's embarrassing.
All right. So are you going, oh, Rob's probably going to take off.
I have another name.
Okay, well, maybe we can put something on our Facebook page that we're looking for people.
I can do that.
And then we can work with OCPC to do like a monkey survey, or...
Perfect.
And say what they want.
Okay.
And maybe we can prioritize which we're going to hit first, dog park or trails.
And I can also, John and I, we went out for a ride together by Harry Jason and the land we own across the street, but I can send that info as well.
Okay.
And I'll help you, obviously, if we do a grant application or whatever.
Thank you.
I think that this will be, I'm kind of interested in it, like I feel like it could be a fun project.
Yeah, this is fun, this is fun, yeah.
If we bring dogs to the meetings, too, they'll have a lot of puppies.
I also signed up, I made an account with Petco, they have grant opportunities and different things.
Ooh, nice.
So I signed up with them, I was more looking into things for Aggie possibly, but I can see, I'll log into that and look around a little bit.
Okay, all right, very good, so more to come. All right, so annual and special town meeting preparations, if any?
Um, so we're just plugging along with the budget process, we have some articles coming in, I expect to have more on that as we get into March.
Perfect. All right, Bree, how about Warren Spade? Wow, that's a little one.
Okay, um, do you want to go into your update?
Sure. So we've been busy with the budget process, and as well as some different negotiation processes going on that are matters for executive session. Let's see, I signed up for that, Petco Foundation, and we're looking at some different grant opportunities for that, and otherwise, looking at some different stuff for our town buildings. We hope to fill out another Green Communities grant application for the upcoming spring funding cycle. Unfortunately, it seems like the return on the investment won't be quite enough to fund the library to do more heat pump work, but they are still like looking at the numbers and if there's anything that could be done as far as rebates and things like that go. In the meantime, we are definitely planning to move forward with a project to install infrared heaters at the Highway Department in the garage bays. We had a lot of success with that project when we did it at the fire station a few years back as a Green Communities grant. It helps save on their heating costs and everything, and just makes that part of the building a lot more comfortable. building a lot more comfortable for the employees and everything. So we're definitely moving forward with that, but we hope to have a more robust application, possibly with something else for the library, for the heating system. So more to come on that.
Great.
So let's see here, correspondence, we have quite a few different things. So we have a use of town property request filed by Christine Joy, and this is for use of the town green for a wedding ceremony on July 20th. Setup would be at 3:30 PM, it would be broken down and decorations removed around 5:15 PM, and vehicles are expected to park likely in the church parking lot, and we are seeking approval for that.
Congratulations.
Yeah, my son's getting married, and he'd like to get married at the green. But I think we're probably going to need a police detail, and I have not spoken to Matt about it, because it, it could be 30 or so cars.
So if we vote yes, and should I sign this rather than you?
Yes, I think, yeah, one of you.
So I make a motion that we, assuming the other agencies that need to approve do, that we approve this use of town property.
I'll second.
Thank you very much.
Is that still like a three, zero vote?
I would do two, zero, one, with her abstaining.
And Bree, let me know if I need to do anything insurance-wise for this, okay.
And I think there was 38 chairs down there, so I don't-
Thank you.
If you want to take a look at them-
Okay.
And then you won't have to rent, maybe as many?
Thank you, I'll take me. Awesome, well, thank you both very much.
Sure.
So then we have a surplus item request. This is for the old Toshiba E Studio 233 copier that is currently taking up space in the Council on Aging. It does not work, it has been replaced by one that's actually functioning, and we have determined that it does not have any resale value, so we would like it to be declared as surplus so that we can have it removed and disposed of.
All right, any questions or concerns? All right, I'll make a motion that we declare the Toshiba copier as surplus and authorize the town administrator to dispose of it.
Second, just out of interest, what if we didn't? You can't throw it away?
You're not supposed to, no.
I mean, where's the, where's the cutoff point? Like when my pen runs out of ink, it's, I was just, sorry, just moved-
All right, all in favor?
He's tired.
These big questions. So the approval of procurement notification, I just wanted to go on record with the board that for the new well project for the town campus, and potentially for a new septic system for the town campus, and potentially for the new fire station, if and when that comes to fruition, that it will be the owner's project manager who is working directly with the town properties committee, who will be overseeing all of the procurement activities for that. So I won't be a part of that particular procurement process for those projects.
I have no problem with the well, okay, because I understand you've already talked to Mr. Palata, and-
Yes.
You're in, you're in. We don't know anything about the septic yet.
Correct.
Quite frankly, and the fire station is kind of a dream still, right?
Correct.
And I hesitate that you have to be involved in the process.
Okay, so do you want me to just-
I definitely want the wells.
Retract for the septic and fire station?
Yes, until we get a little further along, and then if it makes sense, we'll just do it then.
Because, so for the fire station, that will be, because of the dollar amount, we're required by law to have like the owner's project manager onboard and all of that. But at the very least, for now, just where I'm not, and I haven't been involved in any of the procurement for the well, I just want to make it clear that-
Sure, no, I think that's reasonable.
Like he's handling that with town properties.
And it may be that the septic is the same thing, but one, I want your expertise because-
Oh, no, and I'm happy to be involved to that extent.
But she's just not going to be putting them out to bid and doing the IRPs and all of that.
Correct, and I just wanted to be clear about that.
And that's fine.
Okay, so I'll retract for the septic and fire.
I still feel uncomfortable with the fire, because it's a, it's a dream right now.
I'll retract then for those, so my notification will just be for the new well.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Liz.
You're welcome. Okay, then we have here-
Do you need to vote it?
No, she's just- Yeah, I was just, it'll be in the minutes.
Okay.
Right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think about it.
Just a statement.
So I second the modified motion.
Okay, do you want to acknowledge my-
Acknowledge the motion, the modified motion.
Acknowledge the notification, okay, for the well only.
I'll second.
Okay.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Perfect.
Perfect. So then we have a notification here from the Plymouth County Mosquito Control Project. There is a Q and A opportunity on Thursday, March 21st, at 11:00 AM, and that is in Plymouth at 272 South Meadow Road, and if people want more information about Plymouth County Mosquito Control Project, they can contact our Board of Health. And then we also have just a basic notification from the Plymouth County Commissioner's Office, and it is their 2023 Plymouth County Year in Review, so this will be on file in the office if you want to take a look at that. It's just, highlights some of their many accomplishments over the course of 2023. And then, along the lines of what you voted at the last meeting regarding the upcoming elections and everything, we have an item here for you to sign from the town clerk, and this is the warrant for presidential preference primaries, and this is for Tuesday, March 5th, and it states that the polls will be open from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM, and this is here for the board to sign.
I guess she has to post that by tomorrow.
Yes, the constables have to post that, so today was like the last day, I think, for you to sign.
Thank you.
That's, that's, is that next Tuesday?
Yes.
Wow.
And that's all I have.
Okay, excellent, all right, thank you, Liz, very much. All right, we had two sets of minutes that Bree provided, any questions or concerns?
Good.
I thought they looked great, too, thanks, Bree. All right, so I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes from January 29th and February 12th as submitted.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, all right. Our next meeting will be March 11th, followed by March 25th, and I believe we're going to be starting at 5:30.
Yes.
So we'll have to let John know that we'll be starting at 5:30.
5:30?
5:30. Yep, so a little bit earlier. All right, so we'll do some raves, and then we need to go into executive session to do some strategy sessions regarding some bargaining. So anybody have a rave that they would like to share?
I think my rave would be for all the volunteers, both involved in town government and outside organizations like Girl Scouts, Boy Scouts, I mean, it's just amazing, the amount of energy that seems to be going on in this town right now. It bodes well for the town.
And I think my rave is for the dog walking, dog park, dog area discussion, that can be incredibly contentious and divisive, but equally can give the opportunity for some creative ideas, and we're on the way there, and I think the rest of the rave would be for Christine, for taking on a leadership of that project, and particularly kind of radical moderation that allows everybody to get along with each other and get stuff done.
Well, thank you. Mine would be along the same line, just that volunteers, it's so neat to see everything that's happening, like with the Recreation Commission. It seems like, you know, for years, things are so quiet, and then you get, you know, people get involved again, and there's really a lot of exciting things happening. So looking forward to seeing what's going to happen with the fields, that's a really exciting project, and then the possibility of having some walking trails around there is awesome, possibility of having some across the street from Harry Jason, some more walking areas-
Take a look at it.
Is, yeah, it's, it sounds pretty awesome, very exciting. All right, so that is all that we've got for tonight in open session, so I'll make a motion that we go into executive session for the purpose of number two, and that is to conduct strategy sessions and preparations for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, and this would be the Police Union, Fire Union, and Executive Information Coordinator. And then upon completion of executive session, we will adjourn the meeting.
I just wanted to make one suggestion, I talked to John today, it was about if anybody is interested in getting notifications or alerts from any board or committee, there's lots of information on our website, and if you click onto our website and over in the right, excuse me, to the left side, and you scroll down, you can get notifications of any board or committee meeting. It could be a jet postings of minutes, agendas, and there's lots of information. Under news, they can find out about the new rates that Mark had negotiated for us with EverSource, and the energy, so just to let people know that there is information on our website, and any board or committee, if they're interested in joining a board or committee.
Great, well, thanks, Bree.
I've signed it, just put your email.
So check out the website.
That's an area that we need to think about re-energizing.
The website?
Yeah, that people just don't use it, and partly, it's like the dog thing, you tell them, and, you know, but it should be one of our main vehicles to the residents.
Mm-hmm.
You know, it shows up in, in the social media in particular, that people go first to social media, asking, you know, when, when their transfer stations open, and of course, if they went first to the town website, it takes a little bit of work to get used to it, navigate, but that's where the information is, instead of the stuff that so often is just plain wrong, no offense to social media.
Well, I look at Plimpton, Hilton Plimpton, and that's really the, it's like a newspaper, everything's in there. You know, it's not just town government, it's what's going on at the school, if you've got kids, it's, so we need to work that as part of a social media strategy, not just the town website, so that they kind of reinforce each other.
Could use a champion.
Yes, we could. A champion would do it.
Maybe after the dog park. One thing at a time, one thing at a time.
To go into executive session, but there's no second yet.
All right, so I made the motion, we go into executive, okay, second, and then we do a roll call vote, Mr. Traynor?
Yes.
Mrs. Joy, yes, Mr. Russo?
Yes.
All right, all right, so good night, and we'll see you on the 11th.